Sam.
Hello.
Did that meeting abruptly end?
Yeah, I just, just all of a sudden just got cut off.
I think that was my fault because I was trying to leave that meeting to come into the council meeting and started because we had three minutes. So I think that was my fault if that abruptly ended.
It did. It ended. Yeah, it didn't abruptly end.
Well, I helped everybody adjourn. Sorry Mara. It was totally my fault.
We need to adjourn that meeting, don't we?
Yeah, but if I leave this meeting, this one's going to abruptly end if I reopen that other meeting. I, so yeah, I don't know.
So.
Karen made the final motion. Karen made the final motion.
Pete, we were just in an EDA meeting that abruptly got ended without being able to adjourn it. Zoom user error. So users conceivably, and we could get members to dial back into adjourn it. What's your recommendation?
It's a Monday. Is it possible to separately reconvene that Zoom meeting and have a quorum move to adjourn? I mean, that's the only thing I can think of. Otherwise, it just sort of automatically adjourned and everyone kind of knows it. But I assume it's undisputed that it was time to adjourn and we were done with the agenda.
Well, Ryan was mid-sentence with a fabulous project update, so he might argue.
They clapped me off the stage.
Sorry, Ryan.
That's okay.
Totally my fault. I'm sorry.
Karen, I guess either Karen or Dan, while this meeting is going on, do you want to reach out to see if there are members who could jump on? Either Sam or I could jump into that that EDA meeting and adjourn it properly if there's a quorum still available?
Let me try to send an email out here.
Okay, see who's available. And if you need either Sam or I to jump onto that to adjourn it, we can do that.
Need to transfer hosting to someone else, Karen, so you can.
Don't, don't transfer hosting. They'd leave the hosting with Karen. That's what happened last time. I think she was the host and then dropped out. So she transfers hosting. It'll stop this one.
Right. That's, that's what's going to be the problem. So I don't know if, Dan, is there a way for you to jump back in that meeting or not? I don't know. From.
I'm gonna jump off of this one. I'll see if I can get that one back up and running.
Okay.
See if anyone's still there.
Yeah, I'll see if anybody's still in there. If not, I think it's gonna, I'll just jump back into this one.
I guess maybe, just not to get too bogged down in procedure, but Peter, I'm assuming that you don't need Sam or I there. Any, as long as you have a quorum, anybody could make a motion to adjourn that meeting, correct?
Presiding officer should be there. Our acting president will have to do it.
Okay, well, that's Sam or I. So Dan, if you, let us, let us coordinate with Karen. And if you need one Samurai to jump off, we can.
Well, though.
All right, welcome, everybody, to remote meeting fun. We are, hold on just a second. I need to transition to get to my proper agenda. And hold on just a moment, please. Okay, welcome, everybody. We are a little bit past seven o'clock and I will call our council meeting to order. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Munson.
Here.
Councilmember Vice Jim. And Mayor Bain.
Here. I'd invite everybody to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. If you, we, Dan is not here, so we won't be displaying the flag. If you would like to shut off your camera before you rise, you can do so in the bottom left of your Zoom tray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America. And to the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation.
A nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Invisible.
Indivisible. With liberty.
Members of council, before we start the meeting tonight, before we approve the agenda, I would like to start with a quick moment of silence. As many of you know, we lost a member of our community that's been very influential to Forest Lake's history. I'd like to thank a couple of community members who gave me some background and the feedback for this. And I'll just read here. Richard Dick Cheetah first ran for the Forest Lake Township Board of Managers in 1982, winning 277 of the 472 votes. He was reelected to this position until the township annexation was annexed by the city. After the merger, he was elected and served on the Forest Lake City Council as well. In addition to the work with the city, he was elected and served on the Forest Lake Area School Board in the 1990s. In 1997, Governor Ernie Carlson appointed him to the State Board of Teaching. He continued to serve in this role for a dozen years. In many of his years of public service and later years, he stayed active attending local public meetings. He was a mentor to many and would often seek community leader and one, community leaders would often seek for advice. I'd like to welcome us to join in a quick moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Members of council, we have an agenda before us this evening. I'll entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
Moved.
We have a motion.
A second, a second.
Motion from Councilmember Munson, a second from Councilmember Husnick. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye. Agenda's approved. First item, our next item on the agenda is open forum. Karen, did we have any submissions for open forum this evening, either written or members in person?
I do. I have received an email. It's lengthy. So I will start at the beginning. It is from resident Mary Eggie. She says, "We need a city council change, but no one to vote for. Our mayor does not answer phone calls, our emails, and our city disregards residents' pleas for assistance. My family, friends, neighboring residents, government officials, attorneys, and myself have all made numerous calls, emails, and attended many council meetings and conferences with Donovan Hart, Patrick Casey, Mayor Bain, Dan Undom, Shelley Munson, Sam Husnick, and many other mayors and council members, and have received no help with enforcing all the code violations at 1-8155 Elm Crest Avenue. All mentioned above, do not answer calls, emails, and completely disregard the residents in our neighborhood. We have been informed that you are afraid of the residents and therefore ignore our pleas for help. I have saved all the documentations from all attempts since 2014 for help from each of you and can therefore prove to you the disregarded phone calls, emails, and meetings to prove my city has double standards. Donovan Hart advised me to constantly call the police for help so he could ignore the code violations, destructive unpenned chickens, crapping on my deck." That's not what she says, but "crapping on my deck, sidewalks, gardens, where they dig up my plants, my yard, driveway, car, grill, and patio furniture. Donovan told me to put up a fence to keep out their filthy destructive chickens. Donovan calls their code violations rats, filth, eyesore coops, and shanties, and disregard for our neighborhood lifestyle when they are clearly code violations. There has been no disciplinary actions, no fines, just lies, disregard, and unanswered pleas for help. Mark Fineman emailed these violations to you in November of 2016. I have the copies. Fran Myron, Bob Detmer, Tom Emers, legal assistant, Robert Benson, DNR Tom Schmidt, several attorneys, and many others have reviewed the property and city codes and agree that the residents at 1-8155 are in violation of many codes and their septic system too close to my well. I have been informed that the mayor and city council are fearful of these people, fearful of being accused of discrimination. So instead, they use reverse discrimination and double standards on us, causing the devaluation of our homes and property values, the loss of our privacy, peace, and quiet. We are forced to sell our homes for one half their values, and who would buy them because of the 1-8155 neighbors and how you allow them to destroy our neighborhood? The illegal fires, defecating and urinating in public, stealing my mail, running down my mailbox, taking down all mature trees, filth, debris, and eyesore, illegal coops and shanties, the smells, the number of vehicles, and number of people, the drug parties causing fear, and our property robberies, chickens everywhere, and rats. We live in fear, intimidation, and disrespect. Do you want Donovan's lifestyle to be Forest Lakes? That should make us proud. Democracy. I have had to call the police over 30 times, as did my neighbors regarding the 1-8155 residents, for all their illegal, dangerous actions. Each time I called the police, the 1-8155 residents retaliate and punish me. Police informed us we should not have to live in this kind of danger and fear. The police inform us to call the mayor, who does not answer calls or emails. Yet Donovan advised, "Just call the police." The neighbor living at 1-8323 Elm Crest was forced by the city of Forest Lake to remove three vehicles being stored and used to restore his collection of antique autos. The realtor selling the neighboring home requested Forest Lake to remove the vehicles to help sell the property next door. The vehicles were out of sight at the rear of the property in a neat row molded around and not an eyesore, and yet you made him remove them. The owner of the vehicles was upset and sustained a monetary loss as the vehicles were used for parts on his other collection of vehicles. Obvious double standards. In comparison, the city of Forest Lake allows the residents at 1-8155 to depreciate the value of our neighborhood homes' values by 50% according to the same realtors because of the code violations, filth, and lifestyle of the residents, even though we have requested help from our city and police repeatedly. Obvious double standards. I have the 1975 township documents, as do you, where it proves the barn was put up exactly 200 feet from the property line, and it was documented no barns or animals could be housed 200 feet from the property line. Against township documents and code violations, Donovan has allowed them to build dilapidated coops and shanties on the north side of the barn without a permit. The original barn was built exactly 200 feet from the property line. Therefore, these coops, shanties, chickens, and debris are against code and illegal. These shanties are equipped with windows and shades for the renters to stay in with their chickens against code. The document also stated 300 feet for septic systems to wells and property lines, but they were allowed to install their large mound septic system about 60 feet from my well and 20 feet from the property line.
Karen, can I pause you for just a moment, just to transfer the meeting over to Councilmember Husnick? And I'm going to jump onto the EDA to adjourn it, and I'll be right back.
Oh, Mara, Mara, we did, we got, we, we had a quorum and it's adjourned.
Oh.
So we're good.
I'm just slowing getting a message.
Yeah, okay.
Good thing I'm not a first responder.
No, it was taken care of. So thank you.
The, I'm looking where I was left off. They were allowed to install their large mound septic system about 60 feet from my well and 20 feet from the property line when they own many acres to install it on. Instead, it is installed in, in front of my front door against code from 1975 and today. My well has already been contaminated from the 1-8155 address. Their septic system is illegal. We loved our township and did not ask for the mess created when you made us a city, then zoned us agriculture without notice or, or vote. Democracy. Our township moved them out for these same issues with one request. Hugo City Hall moved them out for these same violations also. The following are the obvious code violations Donovan calls lifestyle and agriculture. Please enforce these code violations and enforce the 1975 documents stating no buildings or animals 200 feet from the property line, and septic must be 300 feet from the well and property line, not 60 feet. My well has previously been contaminated and reported to pollution control from the 1-8155 address. And then there's codes in here. You want me to go through and read all the codes cited?
I would say at this point, why don't you forward the, forward the feedback with the text code violation, the allegations of text code violations on to us and kind of send us the whole email? And we can review. If there's other points of substance, happy to have you point that out.
Yeah, there is. So after each code, then there's a comment. So.
Okay.
I can, I can read all that if you want me to.
I, she's, it's called. So, yep, we're over the typical three minutes allotted for public comments. I'd say at this point, forward the full text to council for their review. Have it entered into the public record. And we appreciate Mary Eggie's submission this morning or this afternoon, evening.
Good enough. I'll forward all of that.
Are there other, any other, either participants live for open forum or any other written submissions?
Mayor, I don't have any other written submissions, and I don't have any other, I don't have anybody waiting as an attendee to speak either.
Very good. Thank you so much. Council, we will move on to our next agenda items, which are the consent agenda. We have before you consent agenda items 6A through 6G. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 6A through 6G.
A second. The motion from Councilmember Gerard and a second from Councilmember Munson. And Karen, could we have a roll call on the consent agenda, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye. Consent agenda's approved. We'll move on to our regular agenda. And our first item this evening is Resolution 11092001, which is the certification of delinquent utility accounts. And I believe Sandy, you are walking us through this. I will know that this item does have a public hearing attached to it. We will hear from staff, and then we will provide some opportunity for council to ask questions of staff. We'll turn it over to the public hearing and then bring it back to council for actioning, for further consideration and action. With that, Sandy, do you want to kick us off?
Yeah, first of all, I want to make sure everybody hears me.
We hear you great.
Okay, because I can't seem to get my camera working, so I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, this is something we have to do every year in order to certify the special assessments for non-payment of utility billings. And, and this is something that we will be giving those that still owe until November 30th, the end of the month, to make the payments before we will actually report them to Washington County as special assessments. There are a couple of additional snow removal items on there as well that are small dollar amounts that will be sent as well. But for the most part, unless there's any questions, other than that, this is intended to be sent after November 30th, at which time interest will be applied as well as charges from Washington County for doing the certification, and the interest rates are at 8%.
Thank you, Sandy. Council, any questions of Sandy before we open up her public, the public hearing? So I do have, Councilmember Gerard, go ahead.
Sandy, just briefly, is it, the two nuisance ones, are those the snow removal that you're talking about?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
I have just a process question. Notice, and as is every year when this list comes up, we get a fair number of items that are for the surface water management charge. I had a couple of members of the public reach out who just adamantly believe that they don't receive those bills. And I know that there can be questions, you know, challenges around, you know, whether it's a landlord tenant relationship and where those might be sent. But I just had a number, enough of, enough comment that, I guess, it would, I would ask that we just double check and go back to our utility biller and just, just confirm that those are being sent with the proper frequency. Sometimes, you know, things get missed in the mail, but there were just a number of them that came up this year that just, I would ask that we go back and just check.
Absolutely. I will take a look at that and see what may possibly be going wrong.
Okay, thank you. In my opinion, it doesn't change that there is an amount due. There are small amounts, but they just seem to be nuisance points that if there is something happening upstream that we can fix, it'd be great to see a shorter list next year.
Okay, perfect.
Any questions before we open up public hearing? And I do have a process, a question before we open up that public hearing. Is there anyone at city council on this particular meeting for a public hearing? Are we only doing them virtually for this meeting?
My understanding is virtual.
Okay, sometimes I know Donovan for, for planning commission is at city hall, but okay, wanted to make sure we weren't expecting any potential in-person participants. Okay, with that, I will open up the public hearing. If we have any participants on this particular, on this virtual meeting that want to participate, please indicate your, your desire to do so. You'll be recognized. Is there anybody that would like to speak at public hearing? Either if you're on camera, either raise your hand, or you could drop something into the chat window as well. Sometimes attendees notify us that they are attending for a particular reason. Karen, did you have anybody indicate that they want, that they were going to participate virtually in this for this topic?
Mayor Bain, I do not have any additional attendees. So there's no one on the list right now.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing anybody. We'll keep it open for just another moment. And not seeing anybody come forward, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Council, you have before you Resolution 11092001 in your packet, and I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to approve Resolution Number 11-9-20-01, a resolution ordering certification of unpaid utility charges pursuant, pursuant to Minnesota statute 444.075 subdivision 3E for collection with payable 2021 property taxes.
I'll second it.
A motion from Councilmember Husnick and a second from, or a motion from Council Munson, and a second from Councilmember Husnick. Any further discussion on this item? Not seeing any. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye. Motion approved. To my agenda again. Next agenda item this evening is Encore Apartments Master Plan PUD Amendment. And this is denoted council in your packet with Resolution 11092002. Donovan, we'll start with you. And Donovan, I think you're on mute.
Turns out you can't start sharing unless you unmute us at first. I'd like to present the plan, you, Plan Unit Development Amendment of the Master Sign Plan for Encore Apartments, Legacy Point and Heritage Heights Apartments. These apartments are located in a compound or a block area that's actually so new that it doesn't show up on my screen, but here it's at the intersection of 11th Avenue Southwest and Fourth Street Southwest. We can see the Legacy Point and Heritage Heights buildings there with the Encore on the southern end. Of course, this has just been constructed. And we have Marie Dickover and Dee McCoomas from Norhart representing the application. I like to show the, first, the original plan for these, for these buildings. This was passed as part of the Plan Unit Development. And what we have are three monument signs showing the building names. Also, part of that was the locations of the signs. It was approximately, in these locations, the, this represents a little, this is the new submental also, because they changed the orientation of signs. That's part of it. So you have two signs along Fourth Avenue and then one along the Ninth Avenue Southwest. So no, no significant change in sign, look, monument sign location is proposed for this, as well as no sign change for the wall sign. There was a proof for Encore as far as that PUD, which gave them a larger wall sign, you know, put up near the roof line of the building. But this was reviewed by the Planning Commission and recommended approval on October 28th with the change from initial submental, but it shows this kind of brick, faux-brick overlay here on part of this to be more consistent with the, the structure material, which is part of the commercial sign code. And I'll just note, there is no specific apartment sign rules. They, so we've pretty much applied the residential subdivision monument signs to this. So, and these proposed signs do meet those standards for both a maximum six-foot height and the maximum 32 square feet. This Heritage Height proposed sign is 20 square feet, as well as a Legacy Point. And the Encore apartment sign comes a little larger at 32 square feet. At the Plan Commission meeting, there was the required public hearing held. As I mentioned, it was recommendation of approval for council. And with that, with that, I'm happy to get any questions from council.
Thank you, Donovan. Can you entertain any questions from council? Donovan, was this, a quick point of clarification, was this a unanimous recommendation on the part of the planning commission?
It was, yes.
Thank you. If I missed that as part of your packet, my apologies.
And this is, there's a resolution included in the packet 11-09-20-02 that provides a, if there's a motion made, provides for, you know, vehicle for decision.
Thank you, Donovan. Council, any?
You know, based on what I'm hearing from the planning commission and, and, you know, the, all the codes and everything that go into these signs and Paul and I, like Paul brought it up last time, these sign things are nightmares. But based on all that information, I'd make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 11-09-20-02, the resolution approving master plan, or master sign plan amendment for Mill Pond Forest Encore Apartments LLC Plan Unit Development.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Husnick and a second from Councilmember Gerard. Any further discussion or comment this evening? I know we've got a couple members of the project team here, so thank you for joining, joining us this evening. Appreciate you being here and I appreciate the project. Not hearing any further points of discussion. Karen, could we have a roll call, please? And you're on mute.
I was. Councilmember Gerard. I was. Councilmember Gerard.
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick.
Hi.
Councilmember Munson.
Hi.
Mayor Bean.
Hi, motion approved. Thank you so much. Our next item on the agenda this evening is ordinance number 698 MU1 zoning text amendment to allow medical uses. Donovan?
Thank you. Mayor, members of council like to present the zoning text amendment application to allow medical uses within the downtown mixed use one zoning district. This is one, of course, you know, is a place very, very well. It's the downtown area shown in pink on the screen here. And does represent the kind of the main traditional activity center and commercial center of the city. And a lot of it focused on Lakeside Memorial Park. And of course, the scene of some of the larger apartment, larger developments in the last few years. When this current zoning map was adopted in 2010 and this MU1 was created. Unfortunately, it did not include medical uses as a permitted use. Meanwhile, there are a few medical offices, you know, within this downtown area. Several of them within the park place development and Mr. Richard Freeze, who's is here as part of that board. And the the coincidentally, the MU2 district does have medical uses. This is one, for instance, we have recently constructed Cornerstone Plaza with dental office in it and many other dental offices, some right by some other dental offices and medical offices right by the city center as well. So I really view this as just kind of unintentional oversight. I did try to do some research, reached out to some planning commission members around that 20 and 10 time, and I can't find a reason. It was excluded and the the comprehensive plan doesn't offer any contradictory contradictory evidence to to exclude medical use and it seems to me with greater residential density with, for instance, Sherwood Point being nearby that, you know, we we shouldn't limit the this is a is a use within the zoning district and just be in addition to another reason for people to come downtown and also recognizing that there is, you know, has been some recent vacancies in downtown and perhaps medical uses can fill those vacancies. That's kind of the more community development angle on it. And this was reviewed by the planning commission on October 28th, in which a public hearing was held. No testimony was heard at that time, though Mr. Freeze does report that he tried to offer some testimony, but he had a computer glitch, unfortunately. But but his staff recommendation as well as the unanimous planning commission recommendation is for the adoption of ordinance number 698 to include medical uses in the downtown mixed use MU1 zoning district. With that, I'm happy to take any questions from planning commission. I'm sorry, council.
Thank you, Donovan. And I guess Mr. Freeze, happy to take any points of input you might want to provide, especially since sounds like there were some challenges on providing feedback to the planning commission. Do you have some thoughts you want to share with us?
Thank you, Mayor. We were mortified to find out that we've been nonconforming for the past 10 years. And our medical people who have been in business here for 15 years and longer were particularly mortified. We strongly urge that we that the council pass passes this. We have some interested other medical uses in some of our vacancies that we'd like to fill. And in an ecumenical sense, I'd just point out that Town Square across the street from us in the Franklin Building next to us also have medical uses and I'm sure they would like to have this passed. So I'll pause for any questions.
Thank you for being here. And I guess I would just open it up for broad questions, conversations, council, any questions for staff or Mr. Freeze?
I just, Mara, I have one question for Donovan. I mean, does it? Do you need some sort of specific wording on this thing? I mean, other than just to allow medical uses? I mean, is that going to be good enough?
Yes, that's a good question. Medical uses are defined within the RA within the zoning district. Or otherwise, that wouldn't need to be added. Essentially, it's just inserting something that was there formerly within the within that B2 central business district prior to 2010. It did have a medical uses except for hospitals, long term and patient care centers, nursing homes, mobile or transit transitory medical facilities and laboratories were allowed. So this is just kind of saying, you know, doing that reset. And so that simple language is all that's required here.
Setting an all ordinance. So based on that, then I'd make a motion that we approve that ordinance number 698 in MU one zoning text amendment to allow medical uses as Donovan described.
Second, there's a motion from council member Husnick and a second from council member Munson. Any further question or discussion on this item? I guess I would just ask and to confirm that we, given that there are some known nonconformities, are we comfortable that the language we're about to pass tonight brings those nonconformities into compliance? Or are there some additional challenges that are left remaining that are known? I know you don't know everything, Donovan, from your perspective and Mr. Freeze, from your perspective?
Our understanding was that the existing ones are grandfathered in. It was only when one of our medical places wanted to change signage that this became a known to everybody else. I'd also maybe like to say that we really have appreciated the help of Donovan in helping out with this. He's been great.
I guess I appreciate that there is a grandfather, not pushing this too hard, too hard, but I would, we're making an update just from a competition standpoint, seems like there's an opportunity here to have something that's broad enough to bring into compliance. Are there? Are we doing? Are we doing that? Or are there still some gaps? You know, if somebody were to come in with same same type of business model next door, have we gone far enough to meet those meet those needs?
I believe so. Medical uses is defined pretty, pretty openly, you know, provide flexibility and that's kind of the way it should be so that you know, so that we're not trying to, you know, have to do this, you know, very often. It is defined as the medical uses, those uses concerned with the diagnosis, treatment and care of human beings. So that's, you know, pretty broad. And and it does, it's it's even more broad than the original one that related to, you know, nonhospital. Just knowing that the kind of the scale of things with hospitals now, I mean, it's not really necessary. The other consideration is, you know, is there parking for for these expanded uses? And with there is a niche kind of flexibility inserted in the zoning code within this downtown area where off street parking requirements aren't aren't valid. And that's meant, I think, for all the good reasons of not to have, you know, individual parking areas that'll either just make cost prohibitive for businesses to operate or just turn downtown into a lot of asphalt and not the activity center that we want it to be. And this is for the entire downtown mixed use area. So there's, you know, there are different, you know, some, some of these places are in the town square, the park place, but, you know, they're also up and down Lake Street as well in Centennial.
And with, given current situation with retail, even even retail's challenges pre COVID, this might be a great opportunity to fill some of those vacant spaces. So I fully support this this evening. We have a motion and a second on the table. Are there any further discussions before we call a vote? Not hearing any. Karen, could we get a roll call, please?
I'm muted, Karen.
Councilmember Gerard.
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick.
Hi.
Councilmember Munson.
Hi.
And Mayor Bean.
Hi, motions approved. Mr. Freeze, thank you for being here. With that, we will move on to our next agenda item this evening, which is resolution 11092003, the Smith Property Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Donovan, tonight's your night.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council like to present the comp plan amendment and zoning map amendment for Mr. Mark Smith, who's representing the application is as well this evening. This is a property that council is familiar with. It's located behind Menards in a in a sorry. In a location that was the subject of an interim use permit from last November. So the property, this is a northern section of it, approximately 40 acres. It's here, if you can see my cursor. It's with a Broadway Avenue frontage, some areas on the other side of Broadway Avenue. There's a good bit of wetlands on the property. And that's somewhat I believe is somewhat hindered the development. It's been zoned highway business for some some time and with the recent comprehensive plan adoption, it was shifted to mixed use, which would allow for the full range of retail and office uses as well as you know, hybrid, high density residential, up to 15 dwellings per acre. At the time that I thought that is suitable, provide more flexibility. However, for Mr. Smith, that that wasn't what he felt was was proper, given his experience with it. And he's owned the property since around 2002. And so what, you know, the current status of it is with has the this mixed use, future land use plan category there in that kind of red, red and gold diagonally striped area. And the proposed future land use category is low medium residential as shown on your screen as well as the current zoning, the the B2 again, shown in that red is proposed to be MXR1, which is that a single family up to eight attached unit, three to six dwelling unit per acre zoning district. And this would be more consistent with the other MXR3 zone land to the south that that Mr. Smith also owns. And this is you know, something that he desires and think I think believe he thinks fits into his plans as well as probably given the amount of wetlands on the property that provides more flexibility to have residential, small residential lots versus a large format retail with parking, stormwater facilities, that sort of thing where more contiguous land is is preferred. This was reviewed by the planning commission at their October 20th meeting and recommended for council approval. And also, there was a public hearing that was held. No, no public comment was was received. This one, you know, it is part of the whole contiguous area of commercial, you know, be immediately behind Menards. However, it's been my experience that it's been really hard to attract commercial tenants, commercial development this far from the freeway exits. Some we saw going down on, you know, Everton Avenue and the the Minnesota Lake cell storage property was something I think of the exception, but that was one that you know, had never been developed and but that did just get that you know, that development initiated. And so, you know, staff recommendation as well as the planning commission recommendation is for the adoption of the resolution 11-09-20-03, which is to authorize the staff to submit to the Metropolitan Council a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use, future land use category from mixed use to low medium density residential. I'll note that this, there are actually two, two motions that could be here to agenda items and this one does require a super majority by council to for in its decision. That would be, you know, the the four out of five members. I'm sorry, three out of four this evening.
Peter, go ahead. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Donovan, it's all four that are here this evening. It's
Okay.
The members of the council, not the members present. So all four of you would need to vote an affirmative.
Thank you. So all four members present would have to be to be in have a unanimous decision to adopt a motion on this one. Also, planning commission and staff recommended passage of ordinance 699, which is the zoning map amendment to change the the zoning of this subject property from B2 to MXR1. And of course, that's contingent on the comp plan amendment being approved by the the council. With that, I'm happy to take taking questions for from the city council.
Quick point of clarification, Donovan. I was not able to review the planning commission video on this. Was it a unanimous recommendation or anonymous? I guess they give approval. No, they recommend for.
I believe it was. Some of the discussion, you know, did look at that loss of potential commercial property. I mean, it currently is, you know, you know, taxed as commercial. And of course, that is a consideration. I I believe though the it's my personal opinion that the there's some severe site constraints with either proximity to the freeway or just the amount of wetlands, you know, environmental constraints that that make that make this less than promising for that commercial development and Mr. Smith, you know, is a home builder so that perhaps we could, you know, with this change, see some residential development there.
Councilmember Gerard, anything further you would add as far as perspectives from planning commission to share on kind of consensus of the conversation?
I think Donovan did a nice job presenting and voted a planning commission. They realize that it's a tough parcel to develop, to go past Menards in general is a little bit of the hinterland, you know, as it was kind of the vibe you got there that it's just going to kind of end there. So yeah, as I recall, it was a unanimous decision with a fair amount of discussion about eliminating commercial property, but to Donovan's point, having some residential is probably going to be better than having vacant land.
Do you believe we've got Mr. Smith here? I guess I would open it up. Is there any comments that you would like to add or things you would like council to consider at this point?
There you are, Mayor. And council, thank you for listening to my request. I think Donovan explained it very well, as well as council member Gerard there that it was a, it's a tough site for commerce. I think at the time when I purchased it, it seemed like retail was a more likely a growing thing, but retail, as you know, is going the opposite direction, worse than what's going online. People are doing less with big boxes. So I think the future for that property is going to be much better as a residential site and much more interest in that, even if it ends up being on higher density. I think it's likely going to be developed sooner than if we leave it as commercial. Plus, it's a, in my mind, spending the money at a commercial rate on taxes makes no sense when that's not going to probably be the long term use of the property. And thank you for your thoughts on that.
And forgive my ignorance. How long have you owned the particular parcel?
About 18 years.
Oh, boy. Okay. Oh, boy. Okay. And council, if you have other questions, feel free to jump. And I just have one other kind of project-related question. Are we comfortable? So, so I don't know if I necessarily have, I have overall concern about the loss of commercial space. However, recognize that, you know, this location makes that challenging. The other thing, I guess I have a little, want to make sure we give some conversation on is at least, are these compatible uses? Because certainly the commercial that is adjacent is not going away anytime in the near future. And so are we comfortable that this, you know, a project plan can come forward for residential that has adequate buffers and borders? And so that we don't have angry residents about, you know, lights and noise and traffic and all of the things that come living adjacent to a very busy retail core. Is there, go ahead, Councilmember Gerard.
You know, I think in this case, the advantage is we're specifically referring to Menards and then the other corner a little bit, Cub. They're already there. So people are aware that this is developed. It's not going to be vacant land and all of a sudden Menards gets built there. So I think we're in better shape as far as that goes. And Mr. Smith probably knows his better hand. But I believe there's a pretty decent-sized wetland buffer before he gets to his, on the east side of his property, before you get to the higher side on the west side.
If I could share that, the wetland map that Councilmember Gerard referenced. It's interesting because we had a similar conversation when the interim use permit for farming was, you know, part of the public discussion. And we talked about these welland areas separating any farming activities from residential. You'll see here, you know, on the opposite way, they do protect or do offer a buffer from, you know, from that, you know, Menards commercial use all through here as well as, with yellow being, of course, the welland area. And even shown again, focusing in on this northern part square here, the subject property, you know, really a large amount of wetlands, you know, currently in this data layer.
Donovan. Well, this isn't a dumb question, but it looks like sewer water is going to be available there.
Their sewer water is somewhat adjacent, not immediate. There is something of really shallow public sewer service up on 232nd Street. But where this property would have to be, and this is a conversation I've had with Mr. Smith, they would actually, and it would have to be connection to Everton, just just kind of over by a custom mold design, actually, having a forest main that would go underneath the wetlands for public sewer. And as well, and water, I believe, would come from the
I think Ryan
Yeah, Ryan, Ryan, yes, Ryan will tell you right away.
That cul-de-sac to the south, Elston Courts, has a ten-inch water main stub to the end of the north parcel property. And then we'd loop that back around to the stubs that are out by Broadway with redundancy for fire pressures when the project's fully developed there. So somewhere in the southwest or south to middle parcel of Mark Smith's parcel is where he would install a lift station. Most likely, they would directionally drill the forest main pipe over to Everton Avenue to connect into the manhole that it needs to connect for sewer service. So.
Yeah. Well, either way, if it's commercial or residential, you got to have sort of, you got to have this service there. I was just kind of curious on how you're going to accomplish that, you know. I, me personally, I I guess I'd be leaning toward what the Planet Commission decided on this, only because of the fact that it is a unique situation. There's no question about it. And anytime we lose commercial property, that's a, that's a bear of a thing to do. But it's not exactly, not exactly beating the door down either to get to that point. So it's a unique situation. No question about it. A lot of wetland. And so I think I would support the idea of the change that he wants to make there.
I guess this is Councilmember Husnick's expansion of Councilmember Husnick's point and maybe some of my own concerns around just overall inventory of commercial versus residential. But also recognition that this property's been held in its current state under the current zoning for eighteen years without development. Somebody stop me if this is an out-of-bounds question, but I'll ask anyway. Mr. Smith, do you expect that you're able to convert this fairly quickly into a residential development? Because certainly there is a, there is an underutilization of that property today. And there is an opportunity here potentially for maybe, I'm hoping you're going to tell me it's sooner rather than later. But I guess I'm just interested in your thoughts on if this were approved tonight, timing of next steps.
I'm a mayor, council. I do see it happening much sooner as a housing site. I can't say it's going to be next year, but I would say within the next couple of years, seeing the market stays like it is, I do see a need for housing out there. There's definitely, it's actually a real big benefit. That site's great. Not only just this forty-acre parcel we're talking about changing, but the other parcel, which is all zoned for like empty nester townhomes. And utilizing all that commercial, it'll actually help those commercial boxes that are already there have some additional residence. Where right now, it's, you know, most of the people are coming from quite a distance to get to utilize the Cobb Foods and the Home Depot. Now you'd have housing. So I do hope that that site would be developed in the near future, not this year, but maybe within a year or so. Versus commercial, I don't see any, any scenario where that's going to happen anytime soon.
Thank you. Appreciate you having a crystal ball. Go ahead, Councilmember Husnick.
The question would be how long before, if this, if we voted for it, how long before the Met Council would approve it? I mean, are we looking at a year or six months or whatever?
Donovan, your thoughts on that? Good question.
It's, there is actually a sixty-day interjurisdictional review period. But that's probably the longest piece of time for that schedule, probably within four months, would be my guess.
It keeps in with the timeline anyways, and so.
Council, any further questions, either for Mr. Smith or Donovan?
Mayor Bain, just a quick question for clarity, just curiosity. What would, what would happen or why would the Met Council not approve it or what would happen then?
We, well, it, there's a, you know, as a mixed-use parcel in the land use plan, there's a significant number of high-density residential housing units that were basically assigned to that. And this is, this is actually a a exercise I did with the Headwars 123 Comp Plan Amendment, which is now in that interjurisdictional review period that I just mentioned. And a big piece of that is then reassigning those, those the housing units to different parcels, other areas. Last one, I focused more on the downtown area. And we'll be able to do that again somewhat. But that's mostly it to meet our housing goals, to accommodate, you know, the projected housing that Forest Lake is projected to have, as well as the affordable housing goals. But, but having gone through it once, I'm confident that I think we can do it again. And also, it was something I learned in the last go-around, which is they can, this is, it's something of a, I don't know. I don't know how to explain it, but they, they, after a while, it's kind of a public thing. So I guess I'll say, they really can't. This, housing is not a system within the Met Council jurisdiction. And so if it was related to like water or sanitary sewer usage, they could deny it. But they don't provide housing. It's not in their system. So they actually cannot physically deny it. They could deny the city access to some of the, some funding sources that relate to affordable housing and redevelopment. That's something I don't want to have happen. But it's, it's, it's actually not a, in the scenario, the spectrum of actions that they can deny it.
Thank you. I was just more curious.
Good question.
Other questions? And this is a two-step process tonight. We will have ordinance number 699 for consideration. I'm sorry, ordinance Resolution 1192003, which is the Comp Plan Amendment first. And then we'll consider the ordinance, which is the zoning map change.
Madam Mayor, based on the conversations we've just had here and Donovan's research and all the other stuff that's going on. I would make a motion that we adopt Resolution 11-09-2003, Resolution adopted comprehensive plan amendment for the future land use plan to re-guide the property identified as PID number 6.032.21.33.0004 for mixed use to low to medium density residential.
I'll second.
The motion from Councilmember Husnick and a second from Councilmember Gerard. Any other questions or comments? Not hearing any. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard?
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
And Mayor Bain?
Aye. Motion approved. Next item for consideration is ordinance number 699, which is the zoning map amendment for Smith property. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve ordinance number 699. An ordinance admitting the City of Forest Lake official zoning map, the zoning property identified as PID from highway commercial, B2 to mixed residential, single-family and townhouse district, MRX, MXR1.
I'll second.
A motion from Councilmember Gerard and a second from Councilmember Husnick. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Karen, could we have another roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard?
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
And Mayor Bain?
Aye. Motion approved. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Smith. Good luck with your projects.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Have a good night.
You too. Next item on our agenda this evening, Water Treatment Plant Number Two Rehab, approved plans and specs and authorized ad for bid. Great to have you here. This one's been a long time coming.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council has identified in the capital improvement plan, we've completed the plans and specifications for the Water Treatment Plant Number Two Rehab, which is located at the northwest quadrant of Highway 97 and Eighth Avenue, just south of Arbor Ridge Apartments. You see the anticipated schedule as outlined in the memo. Obviously, if our council meetings adjust in December, we'll just move award to the first possible meeting in January. Engineer's estimate for this work is $930,000. We're required to get permits from the Department of Health and city building permits. Public Works has reviewed the plans and specs. Scope of the work for this project will include rehabilitation of the existing filter, chemical feed improvements, roof replacement, electrical and HVAC improvements. Basically, this will put this plant into twenty years more of service and provide clean and safe drinking water. And this is the first type of work done on this plant since its original construction. So first maintenance project to come by. With that, if there's not any additional questions, we'll request that the City Council approve plans and specs and authorize ad for bid. And our anticipated bid opening would be December 10th, which this project then will kind of just fall into line upon completion of plants one and three. So therefore, the existing contractor in one and three would be available to bid on this project with their, their workers to do this project too. So. And everything's planned accordingly, so we don't take it offline during the peak of the summer irrigation system as well.
Thank you, Ryan. Council questions for Ryan on the request this evening? Seeing none, I'll just add, it's nice to see these, these are big projects. They're, it's nice to see them getting moved along. So appreciate all of the work, and of you and your staff. Council, entertain a motion or any questions?
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve sending out the plans and specifications and authorization and forbid.
I'll second.
Yeah, but motion from Councilmember Gerard and a second from Councilmember Munson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Karen, could we have a roll call, please? And you're on mute.
Aye.
Councilmember Gerard? Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
And Mayor Bain?
Aye. Motion approved. We have a discussion agenda item this evening, 2021 Business License and Waiver of Fee Relief. Karen, we're going to have you walk through this. And I'll just tee this up. It came up out of a number of conversations around, gosh, what are we doing to support local businesses during this time? Council, you may remember that we provided some fee relief in 2020. This is especially timing, timely, because I suspect that with COVID numbers rising, this is not going away anytime soon for our local businesses. And so if we have an opportunity to think proactively on what we might want to do for 2021, Karen is in process of sending out renewal applications and wanted to get this in front of you for consideration. So Karen, you want to take us through some details?
Thanks, Mayor Bain. Yeah, actually, I have sent out all the packets for license renewals. So that's happened. I'm starting to get some calls now, so I know people have questions. And I expect I might be getting some of those applications already completed and back probably this week. But in your packet, you're going to find information that was presented last June at the June 15th council meeting, along with a resolution that was adopted in July at the July 13th meeting. And that resolution provided relief to business license holders that had been shut down during the eighty-four days from, I believe it was March 18th into June, because of the COVID-19 issues that we're having. And so the licenses that received a refund were those that were most impacted during the shutdown. That was massage therapists. So that included the individual therapist licenses and then also location licenses. And then those liquor license holders that were doing on sale. So it didn't include selling out of a liquor store or convenience stores, that kind of thing. It was just the on-sale liquor license holders. So as we move forward into today, I provided additional information in the packet. That includes what our current executive order is relating to COVID-19. You also have some information in there about the stay-safe orders that describes the current phases that we've moved through. My understanding is that right now we're in phase three, trying to push out of that and into phase four. I'm not sure how long that process is going to take us. It almost seems like we're going backwards right now. So the reason I included all that information is just to kind of give you an idea of, you know, we're not getting out of this anytime soon. And it's going to take some time for these businesses and individuals really to recover from what's been happening. So because of the current situation, businesses will continue to suffer probably, and most likely are, they'll continue to suffer their financial loss. Earlier this year, again, the city was able to provide some funding to some of those license holders. And we have an opportunity to consider this option again as we move into the 2021 licensing season. In your packet, you will find a list of the active business license holders in the city, as well as the associated fees for their annual license. So I've included everything, and it shows what the full revenue then would be for business licensing. That's the projected revenues. If the massage and on-sale license fees are separated out from that group, that approximates a little over $40,000, 42.2 to be exact. And that is the largest portion of the on-sale liquor licensing fees. So I've broken, I've broken it down. There's a, there's a chart in there at the very bottom where it's kind of broken down to show just the massage and the on-sale liquor licensing. And so with the, I also should mention that I do have a new on-sale liquor license that's coming in. So with the 42.2 and a new, potential new on-sale liquor license that's coming in, it's being worked on right now. The total for these licensing fees The total for these licensing fees that's projected would be about forty-five thousand dollars for the twenty twenty one season. So if we're looking at doing a full refund for, for the full season, that's, that's the dollar value that we're talking about. The revenue, my understanding is it goes to the general fund. Some of that does go to compliance checks that are done by the police department as well. So we, we won't, my understanding is we're not halting the compliance checks. Those have to continue. But funding does go, some of that funding does go towards those compliance checks that are done by the police. So if there's questions, that's the breakdown of it. If there's questions, let me know. Again, like I said, the licensing applications have gone out for this season and I should anticipate those rolling in now, starting this weekend beyond.
Patrick, go ahead.
Oh yeah, I was, I was gonna cover this in my staff report, but be prepared for the governor to make some changes in his orders for different places, and I think they're going to get more strict. So I think the impact is going to be more than we are experiencing now. At least that's the last time I talked to, actually talked to somebody today in the state capitol about that. And the second thing is that if we're going to give any, any kind of relief for next year, I would hope we would make that decision really quick. Because we need to determine how we're gonna fill that revenue gap for the twenty-one budget season. And we're coming down to the very end of that, even though forty-five thousand on the whole isn't that difficult, there isn't that much, but it's still forty-five thousand that we have to figure out how to bug the hole for the year twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, Patrick, that's my question. What do you have insights, recommendations on where that money comes from? I know that we're working on a kind of an update, you know, first projections on how we're going to end the year. But walk, going into this final budget cycle for twenty twenty-one, any thoughts?
The projections for the end of the year, I think we'll be close to breaking even. We may be a little short. We've done a few things there. We've, you know, held off on hiring two positions. One is the communications recreation person, the other is the third building inspector. So we should be able to squeak by, I think. For the twenty twenty season. Being the local government in Minnesota does not have a lot of independent revenue outside what the state gives us and what we collect in very small fees. If you recall, we have dramatically reduced all the building related permitting for twenty twenty-one. So we understand that it's going to be quite a loss in the budget to that. So I don't particularly have an answer for you there as far as how we would plug forty-five thousand. Unless we do similar, we just kind of hold off on hiring and try to squeeze some other places so we can balance the budget.
I can appreciate that the E D A has a full projected plate with, of project dollars related to the downtown project, and I don't want to foolishly overstep that, but I wonder if there's some opportunity for perhaps some E D A cost share here. I, I asked that question not knowing fully if that's an appropriate use of allowed E D A funds, but just throwing out options if we're if, if things are tight from a budget perspective.
Yeah, I, I think we have to look at, E D A has a pretty healthy fund balance, I believe, and it's in the fund, so. If there are not, if there are costs in the general fund that are related to that study, we, we can find a way to shift that out. I think that's appropriate. I think we just need to go over that this week internally to see where other things are.
And I mentioned that also, full disclosure that we have I mentioned this topic to the E D A today and as part of another conversation, I have not, we have not approached them around approval or willingness to help fund this relief. So I, I don't know, there just says ideas on the table. Other thoughts, questions?
Mayor Bain, I just, I had a question on timing of when we, because we're not voting on this tonight. So my question was, when, because of what Patrick said in terms of deciding on the budget for twenty twenty-one, and then just the comment that you know that everyone else is, it's not new news for everyone, but that the, the numbers are worse than ever. And I don't, I don't see it getting better with the winter months coming, that if there's something that we can do proactively to relieve some of the stress and angst for local business, I, I would be in favor of it, knowing how we're gonna what we're gonna do impacting the twenty twenty-one budget, but I just hate to, I'd hate to see just the negative effects of, of us not helping.
I think that one of the approaches you might think about is with also the news yesterday and today about vaccinations and that coming on, is maybe we take a two-step approach to this where we do the first half year of, of some kind of relief and kind of see where we go for the second half of the year, because a twenty-five thousand dollar plug is a lot easier than a forty-five thousand dollar plug. If we get to July or June of next year and it's still bad, it's still getting worse, or we're still having impacts where we know that we'll be able to aid, judge where we're at in mid-year and see if that's a easier adjustment for us. And we'll be able to see if vaccinations have hit, hit the market and people are getting vaccinated and we just don't know what six months from now, how that's gonna look.
With that approach, would you suggest, maybe I'm too in the weeds, would you suggest that we collect half at this point with the option to refund, or would you suggest that we try to institute another payment cycle? I, I get a little worried with the latter part because it's a, it's an expense that we've never collected at that time before, but I, I might be a bit in the weeds and we don't need to decide that today.
Yeah, I think Karen and I will have to talk about that. Do you make them pay half right now? Half right now, or do you make them? You know, we'll, we'll figure that out.
Very good. Council member Gerard.
Yeah, I'm in favor of, of not only reduction, but kind of a more payment plan. I, I believe currently they have to send all of their money in with their license application. Can we bill them quarterly? And so that, I see Karen, oh, but you know, from, just from the standpoint of it, it, it's gonna be a lousy winner and every nickel's gonna help these businesses. So, you know, personally, I would, I would even be in favor of saying, you know, let's give one quarter of it free for the first quarter of the year. And then three quarterly payments of the eight hundred or so dollars that come, or, or something similar to ease the pain. Three thousand's a lot of cash for a restaurant that isn't gonna do real well once it gets really cold, like starting today.
Council member Hesnick.
I would love to see this go away for the year and, you know, just forget about the payments at all. Which means we'd have to maybe cut somewhere else. And I don't know if there's somebody else's budget that we could trim somehow. It, that's always a tough deal, you know, and, but maybe we gotta take another council pay, I don't know.
That's not gonna get us very far, but.
Point is, we got, we gotta do something and I, and, and to Paul's point, I mean, that's a lot of money. That's a lot of sandwiches you gotta, you gotta produce in, in order to pay for that. And I'd love to see that, that relief happen for at least the year, for sure. And so let's take a hard look and see if we can't cut somewhere else to make up that forty-five thousand dollars. You know, but it may not be personnel, who knows?
You know, we joke about council pay. There is a council, there is a council line item that is intended for, you know, attendance of this is, this is maybe picking up pennies, but attendance of various conferences and training events that are not happening in twenty twenty-one. So there is some opportunity for some of those dollars to be reallocated.
I think you, you need to give us a day or two to take a real hard look at that. What we really need is it a little bit more of a direction of is it going to be a full year, or do you want us to look at half or quarters? I mean, we can give you three options if that's the case. Just trying to make sure before we sit down and talk about it, which one that's going to be.
My sense is we better plan for a full year. I think we should clear budget for a full year, and if we were to come back and tactically say we're gonna break it up six and, six months and six months, I'd rather be in that situation than I, I, I mean, our, we're, get us out six more months and we're gonna be through the November payment cycle and we're gonna be seeing the the first property tax payment of twenty twenty-one. We might not be sitting in a better situation. So I'd rather us clear it now and have it to make a tougher budget decision deeper into twenty twenty-one.
Mark, getting back to that partial joke about the council, I mean, I wouldn't, I would not be opposed to, to making some kind of a symbolic cut for the council pay.
Oh, I'll did, I'll ditto that.
You know, it's not, nobody's getting risked sitting on a council, right? But I think if nothing else, there should be a symbolic reduction, at least for the next year, and
I'd support that too.
Yeah, I support that as well.
We'll tell Munson, no, not Munson, Kathy later.
Tells me she might support this.
I honestly want to have that discussion and, you know.
I support that.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna help anything except that I, I think it kind of shows our good faith if we do that, so.
It does help fill the gap when we're talking about forty thousand dollars times.
No, 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 but.
So, yeah, nope. And, and it's a symbolic move. Um, I, I jumped in on the feedback around the full year. Any other feedbacks around full year, half year, just to give Patrick a planning target?
I have no problem with a full year. As long as we look at it seriously halfway through and if businesses are good, if life's good again, then we charge them and if, if we have bonus money. But I have no problem trying to squeak out forty thousand out of the budget somewhere. And I would also support Sam's notion to cut the council pay, although my vote really doesn't count.
Yeah, noted. I, I guess if we are considering something around payment cycle, just ask coordination with Peter so that we're getting any proper, I think those those payment dates might be memorialized in ordinance, and so we just need to do something to give us flexibility. So it looks like we might be looking at, from a budget planning perspective, taking out or giving full year relief and then working through what we might do from a language perspective to allow us to reconsider. And what that payment cycle might look like. All right. Patrick and Karen, does that give you enough?
I, I believe it does, Karen.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think so.
Perfect. Thank you for that. We will move on to staff updates. Let's start with Patrick this evening. And then we will go to Dan.
Okay, besides the Governor Walls, I believe, like I said just earlier, I think there's going to be more strict restrictions in place. And this coming week, I don't know what those are yet, but that's what I believe. Talked today with the state, the governor's office today regarding a possible testing site and for, somewhere in Forest Lake. It's real preliminary. They're looking for a site in the northern part of this county. I'm gonna meet with them tomorrow at ten, or I think it's actually eleven, to see if we can find a, a spit testing site that, that will work for them. We'll let you know when, when and if and how that works out. I think it's I think we should try real hard to get that because it, it'll be close and it'll serve our residents and it's not one really close right now. And just an update on the airport business park. Without saying a lot, I believe that we may come to you on Monday with some progress on that front, and I will wait until Monday to see if, if that actually is the case. So you may have to plan for a special session on Monday night along with the workshop. That's it.
Any questions for Patrick? All right, Dan, and we'll move to Chief Peterson after Dan. Hi, Dan.
Hey, I have no updates unless there are any questions for me.
Any questions for Dan? Dan, I'll just give you thanks again. We, E D A meeting approved the final amounts for the three hundred thousand dollars of CARES Act funding that we had allocated for business grants. Tonight, we approved about fifty thousand dollars in business grants to the nonprofits. And that was the residual amount that was unable to be granted to for-profit businesses, and so happy to be able to see some of those nonprofits on the list as well. And we have a fully funded plan. So Dan, that's been a ton, Dan has turned into an underwriting desk that was not in his job description at the beginning of the year. So many thanks for wearing that hat. Lots of coordination. The, these, these grant agreements are not small, and he has chased down A language and B signatures on how many in total? About thirty?
Yeah, I think it's about thirty, and it's the full three hundred thousand got expensed, so.
I just had to sign them and I thought it was a lot of work. You put them all together, so.
And keep track of them all too, so.
Yeah, well done. Any questions for Dan this evening? Council member Gerard.
Dan, can you, are we gonna get the list for the nonprofits like you did for the for-profits?
I will get that list out momentarily here. I've been having some email problems, so once I get my email back. Yep, I'll release it.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions for Dan? We'll move on to Chief Peterson. Welcome, Chief.
Hello, good evening to all. Ryan, just wanna thank you for updating the E D A in regards to the speed trailer information I sent out last week, or it was two weeks ago now. Secondly, just an update on the body worn cameras. They are on backlog, so our officers won't be getting those until we're hoping the end of November, so it's not too, too long from now. And then just getting trained in on those a week or two after that, and everybody will be wearing them soon. So we are looking forward to that. Other than that, no other updates for you unless you have some questions for me.
Any questions for Chief Peterson this evening? Thank you, Chief. Pete will go to you next and then Sandy after Pete.
Good evening, Your Honor. I don't have any updates, but I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions for Pete tonight? All right, Sandy, and we'll do Ryan after Sandy. Good evening, Sandy.
Hi, I don't have anything at this point in time unless somebody has any questions for me.
Don't think so. Any questions for Sandy? Are we still on quick preview for council? Are we still on for ten-year financial plan next workshop?
Yes, we are.
Expect, I'm expecting a ton of fun with that. I know it's been a lot of work for you guys, so thank you. All right, Ryan, you're up.
Mayor City Council, nothing specific to update you guys on at this time. Just open up with any questions you might have.
Any questions for Ryan? Hearing none, I think we've, Donna, Donovan, I almost missed you. You're up on the top on council row in my, in my Zoom screen. Any updates for council this evening?
Oh, just briefly, I would say that Plan Commission has been pretty active. You saw results of some of those recommendations on this agenda this evening. Also was a high school football and all-purpose field rehab project there that they, it was a CUP amendment for that, approved at their October twenty-eighth meeting. So that's some really big improvements for the field, astroturfing, press box, concession box, storage building and actually replacing some of the athletic field space. This all-purpose field softball field that was displaced by the fieldhouse construction in twenty it was twenty seventeen, you're part of the big, you know, school bond project. Also renewal of the pipe preserve grain plan to get that hopefully wrapped up by next summer. Also report that coming up this, at this next Parks, Lakes and Trails Commission and Plan Commission meetings. This, they are reviewing a hundred and twenty unit concept plan for single-family homes on northern section of Chris Taylor's property. So I'm looking forward to that and hopefully City Council will get a look at that. Probably it would be January at the earliest, but I'm, I'm excited about that and happy to take questions from council.
Donovan, as you mentioned, that upcoming concept plan for the Chris Taylor property just brings in a question, a thought that came up when, during the review of the zoning change, and I didn't want to ask it as part of that, because I think of the zoning change as a long-term plan and housing inventory of, is more of a short-term, kind of more of a short-term economic measure. How are we looking for current inventory of sites for residential? The, the tonight's change off the table, otherwise, what is that? The, the tonight's change off the table, otherwise, what is that inventory looking like?
Well, if you go by conversations, you know, with no one putting their, their signatures on the applications, it looks really good. There is, so I just want another one. I've been pretty constant conversations with another developer. You know, we don't have any set date for Chestnut Creek Phase Two, but there are conversations around that. I had another national builder reach out last week asking about potential sites. So it's been really active that way. You know, it seems the builders recognize there's, they're still been able to build homes, you know, during this, this pandemic era, but and, you know, and they're looking here in this, like lower density areas to, you know, put their products. But again, we're still, have not seen the applications. I'm, I mean, I'm excited for this concept plan. This is something that, you know, was kicked around last spring, so I hope it actually, you know, works this time around. So it's really hard. I can't make any promises, but I'm optimistic.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Other questions for Donovan this evening? If I've missed any staff, I think we've caught everybody. All right, let's transition to council updates. Sam, we'll start with you and then we'll move to Councilmember Munson.
Sure.
Karen, I forgot you, I did. Go ahead.
That's okay. I just wanted to follow up with council on some election stuff, so you're gonna have some items coming at you as a wrap-up for the elections. It may result in, I gotta, I gotta contact County Elections Office tomorrow, but it may result in calling a special meeting. I will let you know ASAP when I find out.
Do you think that special meeting would be next Monday, or do you think we, you would need something?
Yeah, I would, my intent would be to have it right before the workshop, or at workshop time, when you have the workshop meeting. As soon as I find out, I will, I will let you know. And then what else was I gonna say? Elections and something else, I can't remember. Sorry, I can't remember.
Think of it during council updates, jump in. I just want to say thank you for being there during election day. I know it was a very long day from the time when the polls closed and you were there up until the very end of the last person out of the building. I, is you all, many of you probably heard there was some feedback around having two polling places at the Forest Lake City Center. I did get a phone call from Commissioner Myron on election night, well, election afternoon, as that line was getting longer. He was just indicating that they were aware of it and they were working with staff. And I did provide him feedback both that day and then also the next day. We had a follow-up conversation and we really do need to encourage the county to get a second site for one of those, because having two precincts in the same building, hopefully we're not doing COVID during, in two years, but even just in an ordinary election cycle, it's a lot of, it's a lot of traffic for two locations when I think there are other spots within the city that we could encourage them to use. So he, that, he's well aware of that, and I know Karen, this has been on your mind as well. So thanks for helping to manage that day, and I think there's some options for the next election cycle. Any, anything else for Karen? All right, we'll go now Councilmember Husnick.
Thank you, Mara. Yeah, the, the election thing, I just hope no one was, was discouraged because that line got awful long. And if you were from precinct one, it was really long. Precinct two, there was nobody. We had empty booths sitting up there that you couldn't use. It could, they weren't intermingling them, so it, it made it tough. So I just hope no one was discouraged by that. Other than that, we had, last Wednesday, we had an airport commission meeting that I attended and basically we're just kind of going through our wish list of, we have a need for more hangar spaces out there and engineers have come up with some ideas that we tentatively approved and now we can at least take a look at it and it's all for the future. Well, you know, based on state funding and approvals and years away it, but we have to get it, you know, get your foot in the door. So other than that, I attended the EDA meeting tonight along with Mara and she's pretty well explained what we were, we had a lively discussion about the CARES Act and so beyond that, that's all I have for this evening. So thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Councilmember Munson.
No update this evening.
Very good. Councilmember Gerard.
I attended a planning commission and I think Donovan covered every part of that already, so we don't need to rehash it.
Very good. I just have a couple of quick updates. One, wanna congratulate Councilmember Husnick on his reappointment. Looking forward to another four years with you, or at least two years if I am granted that opportunity. Also want to congratulate Hannah Valento for her win on council, and so look forward to onboarding her in the next couple of months and having her join us and be sworn in in January. Want to also just talk about with that transition, it's time to start thinking about commissions and appointments. And so I will be sending out some times to each of you so we could sit down one-on-one and talk about what you might want to do this next year related to liaison appointments. And then also I will be looking for some feedback for each one of you on your boards and commissions where we have expiring terms on reappointment, or if we have vacancies that need to be filled, how do we fill those spots in January? And so look for some updates from me to kind of just sit down or whether it's a cup of coffee or a virtual conversation, just to kind of talk about and make sure we're well-prepared for January. So a couple of things that are on my mind. Sam mentioned we had a very lively conversation at the EDA. They, I think we got some, we got some feedback around some concern around council's prioritization for our CARES Act spending and some concern that we have perhaps undervalued in that prioritization investments in local businesses and perhaps over-invested in city amenities. The, the point of conflict is the Castlewood Building. And, you know, we talked about, you know, the timeline, we tried to give some perspective on council's overall thought process. I do think that there's an opportunity for us to close some communication gaps as, as we're making decisions. Even if it is related to a golf course, they, you know, they see that as economic development and development in the city and would like to hear more of that. And so I think there are some communication things that we can do to tee those up better in the future. And I think it opened up just a good discussion around overall prioritization. And I do think that as it relates to specifically general fund dollars, we do need, we have some work to do around education, around just how limited we are as it relates to city facilities or Castlewood. I think the community doesn't understand how Castlewood operates and just how, I guess, tenuous that future operation is. And so if we continue to value that as council, however we structure that from a financial perspective, I think the community, I think there's an opportunity to get more input and also just to, you know, kind of opportunity to communicate, because again, I think people just see it as a, you know, a well-functioning, beautiful place that doesn't need anything, and we know that that's not true, and I'm not sure that everybody understands that. So it's a little, little bit of my personal opinion mixed in there, but just some things I think we all should be thinking of as we go into twenty-twenty-one. And, and, and then I guess it was an opportunity to just overall kind of talk through, you know, total CARES Act dollars, what those funds were allowed for, how we use them. And on a very positive note, it was great to see the final funding of those nonprofit grants. So any questions, anything that we haven't talked about this evening that we should cover? All right, not seeing anything come forward. We are at the end of our planned agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and Karen, could we get one more roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick.
Hi.
Councilmember Munson.
Hi.
And Mayor Bean.
Hi, and we are adjourned. Have a great evening, everybody. Thank you.
All right.